Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be careful, I almost took them all last time. Okay, Chairman's report, I signed the PR 20-12 and the 20-14 for the Board of Selectmen. The PR 20-12, 20-13, and 20-14 for Ellen Jamison, signed the VW 20-14 Mass Municipal Association Attendance Fee MMA Annual Meeting and RJ Kelly Company Incorporated Miscellaneous Repairs. We have grants, gifts, and donations. We have a vote to accept the Council on Aging donation for $125.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Okay, this is a donation, one donation from Deanna Stora, 15 School Street, and another donation from Mary E. Gill of Dartmouth Way, Newbury, Mass. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we send a letter of thanks to each of them?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a vote to accept a Newbury Town Library donation. It's a $3,535. It's from Newbury Port Area Industrial Development Foundation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I move that we send them a letter as well?
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote to accept Police Department gifts and donations. This is from Ally and Alan and Tracy Lampert.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to second.
Send him a letter?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department, fiscal year 2020, State 911 Department Support Incentive Grant of $31,908.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to say that's due to the hard work of our police state, police departments seeking out these grants as paperwork and process you've got to go through, and these grants don't just get dropped on us, you have to go after them.
If I might, can you speak a little bit to what this grant is for, and maybe the next one as well, if you don't mind, Chief?
It covers the cost of running a dispatch center. It helps to pray the cost of dispatcher salaries and also computer hardware and software for the dispatch centers. So it's a very good grant, we use it all the time, so.
Super.
Fantastic.
All right, make sure you thank John and your other people for being diligent about going after all these opportunities. If they didn't, we wouldn't have them.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, we also have another, did we accept that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And also another part of it, a vote to accept Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, State 911 Department, fiscal year 2020, Department of Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant, $18,000.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we, you want to do this one, Damon? I'm going to recuse. So we'll get into some, some one-day liquor licenses.
One-day liquor license, Far From the Tree LLC, Newbury Bonfire at Spencer Pierce Little Farm, 5 Little's Lane, Saturday, January 18th, 2020, from 3 to 9.
Motion.
Second.
Is there anyone who wants to talk about the event?
President, for Far From the Tree, I can talk a little bit about our company.
Come on up.
You're on TV.
Do you have any specific questions, anything you need to know about the event?
No, it's mostly, we want to give people the opportunity to talk about their event, advocate, get drum up interest, so.
You're on TV.
I, I, thank you. For us, so it's the family of my understanding, this is our first year as Far From the Tree attending, so it's the annual bonfire, Christmas tree bonfire that several of the local, well, from my end, the local alcohol producers, so Ipswich Ale, 1634 Metairie, and thus, I believe, River Wheel Mill Winery, are giving attendance, along with, I know there's a Boy Scout or Girl Scout troop that has a table and tent there, and several local, like food truck and pop-ups, things like that, so a range of activities for a range of ages, so just a good afternoon of fun and enjoyment.
And you guys are cider, or?
Cider, yes, hard cider.
Very good.
Might have a little bit of snow for it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice, yeah.
Any other questions?
Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, do we want to rattle through some business, yeah, we have appointments. We have two appointments. First one is appointment of Tom Hughes as a Special Municipal Employees Consultant to the Town, January 14th, 2020, to June 30th, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of Tim Meehan as a Special Municipal Employee as a Consultant to the Town, January 14th, 2020, to June 30th, 2021.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Well, can we discuss, what are these, what are their roles, do you know?
They do engineering work for the town, but at times, they also represent individuals. So while we have them working on the Plum Island egress, we felt it proper to make sure it's disclosed, because at times, they do have to, you know, in their line of work, they represent people before the town and other municipalities.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We also have Alexander B. Burke.
Who is in attendance? We didn't vote on that last one.
Oh, right above it. All those in favor for the Tim, for Tim Meehan as a Special Municipal Employee as a Consultant to the Town?
Aye.
What about Alexander?
We have an appointment of Alexander B. Burke to the Board of Trustees, Newbury Town Library, from January 14th. Would you like to introduce yourself? No pressure if you don't, but.
No, it's fine, it's fine. Good evening, all. I am Alexander Burke, and I'm requesting you to appoint me to the remaining term of Jeff Wardwell's term on the Board of Trustees at the, at the library. It'll run until, well, 12 May, when we have our next town election, and if it all works agreeably, I'll attempt to continue after 12 May, hopefully, anyway.
That's good.
Are you still going to keep your spot with the old Newbury?
Oh, for sure.
Thank you.
It crosses over beautifully, it really does, Alicia.
It does, so, I think it's a very good fit.
No, it's just kind of a budget.
Thank you for stepping up.
Oh, no, no, happy to do it, and great people to work with, and.
Yeah.
Keep smiling there.
He's socially responsible, so. You like dick.
And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we wholeheartedly endorse Alex's appointment. He's stepped up already and has been a very active participant, and you're familiar with the, the Newbury, the town I remember. Alex has been in the forefront of that and leading the charge and making sure we get those pieces right, and he's been an active participant in that, and it's his base, his knowledge of the town is going to be a great asset to us trying to catalog and document our local history room.
I think it's an excellent fit.
Oh, it's perfect. Yeah, we've already had him sitting in meetings, so, and he's, he keeps coming back, so.
That's the battle.
Be nice to him. Speaking of the museum, which is the museum of Old Newbury, our town, we have at the museum a program of one-year memberships for the Boards of Selectmen and City Councilors in the three towns, city and two towns, which have flown out of Old Newbury. And at your next meeting, I'll, I'll bring forward your, your memberships for the next year.
Oh, I was aware of that, that's wonderful.
You guys need to know things. We know a few things, you know, let's put it together. Anyway, next month.
Yeah, again, on behalf of the trustees, we invite everybody to come to the Saturday's meeting of the town I remember. It was a great success, the last time. Michael was there, so he can attest.
What time is that?
At 10:30, 10:30 to noon.
Yeah.
Come and just share your memories of living in town.
It was really a good time.
It was a good time, yeah.
Very relaxed, very laid back, and we're recording it all, it's becoming part of the video and audio history of the town. It will be cataloged and kept in the library in the future.
To borrow your line, you're on television.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you, Alexander.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You did those.
You know, before you guys leave, this, it, you know, as I get older, too, it's funny, some of those links that seemed to be everywhere 10 years ago, meeting some of the older folks to talk to that really could look back, and people that could look back into different parts of what we did, they're certainly not here anymore, it seems, in just the last decade, so.
Right, and that's, and Jeff, that's what we're trying to capture, approaching that calendar. We all recognize that those things get lost, and it's happened in a number of times that I've talked with people, we've got to do this, and we've got to record that, and the opportunity is lost.
I can always remember saying I was going to get out and talk to Mr. Colby, and, you know, discuss some of the things clamming from the old days, and just don't get to it.
Absolutely, and what we're going to do, we'll mention it on Saturday to folks, and we realize that not everybody can make it on Saturday. And some people, we're getting feedback now, have difficulty even getting there, so we've going to come up with a method of doing some things during the week, in the evening, maybe smaller groups, so it, as I keep beating this drum, too, it's a work in progress, and we'll just keep working on it until we, we want to record as much of this as we possibly can. And everybody's memories are different. One of the big things, the big hit so far, has been Adventureland.
Yeah, it was.
Okay? So, I grew up in Revere, and I used to come to Adventureland, so.
Yeah, Dad, Dad told me that, you know, they'd do a shootout with blanks with real pistols, and they'd fall off the horses and roll, and do it all.
Yeah, it was great. Yeah, and there's actually, I think somebody from Triton put together that video?
Yes.
That's on, on, not Facebook, on YouTube, and actually, we'll be running that on Saturday, too, so it's, we'll see you on Saturday.
I'll be there.
Yeah, come.
Yeah, come enjoy, and there'll be coffee and some patients.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Well, do we want to take a few business licenses? Well, we're killing a couple minutes here?
I think that's it.
All right, 2020 business license renewals as follows, Jeremy P. Cohen, Jaden Auto, 6 Newbury Port Turnpike, Motor Vehicle Class II. Anthony Barbieris, A&amp;M Motors, 4 to 6 Newbury Port Turnpike, Motor Vehicle Class II. Michael in Selby Hall, DBA American Automotive LLC, 61 Main Street, Auto Repair.
Thanks, Mike.
Gary Macheros, Angie Service Incorporated, 101 Newbury Port Turnpike, Motor Vehicle Class II. Gary Macheros, Angie Service, 101 Newbury Port Turnpike, Auto Repair. Gary Macheros, Supplied Automotive Technology, 101 Newbury Port Turnpike, Auto and Marine. Barry Davis, BD Automotive, 24 Middle Road, General Business, Automotive Repair. William Kosky, Jr., Bill's Auto Repair, 24 Middle Road, Auto and Marine Repair. Pamela Doherty, DBA Beach Dog Daycare, 96 Newbury Port Turnpike. Henry C. Becker, DBA, Henry C. Becker Custom Building Limited, 8 Riverview Drive, Custom Woodworking and Construction. Ryan Guthrie and Brendan Guthrie, Blue, The Inn on the Beach, 24 Fordham Way, Common Vic and Inn. Ryan Guthrie, Brendan Guthrie, Blue, The Inn on the Beach, 11 Fordham Way, Parking Lot. Ryan Guthrie, Brendan Guthrie, Blue, The Inn on the Beach, 77 Southern Boulevard, Parking Lot. John A. Des Ormo, Jr., Fit by John, 89 Hanover Street, Unit 3, General Business Personal Training. Norma Rita, High Tail Acres, 120 High Road, Farm Products, Feeds and Related Items. John Glant, Pool and Spa, 96 Newbury Port Turnpike, General Business. Cheryl Moulton, Danvis Butchery, 2 Morgue Nav, Common Vic. Randall Bandowian, DBA Old Newbury Boat Company, 84 Newbury Port Turnpike, General Business Boat Sales. Randall Bandowian, trustee, Offshore Concepts Conservation Trust, DBA U.S. Number One Auto and Marine, 84 Newbury Port Turnpike, Motor Vehicle Class II.
Want to stop there? And then come back to it?
Yeah, does, does anyone have any comments on any of the licenses we've read off so far?
Motion to approve all?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And please, once we, we might have a break between the public hearings, if we do, please remind me to pick up where we left off.
Did we do this one? Did we do this one?
No.
That's the last one, okay.
Okay, now that it's 7:15, we have a public hearing, and I will let Alicia read the legal notice.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice of a public hearing being held on January 14th, 2020, at 7:15 PM at Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass, in the second floor hearing room, for the purpose of holding a public hearing to review the application for a change of ownership interest amendment to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, all alcohol license of Rusty Can LLC, DBA Rustin Can, located at 9 Fruit Street, Byfield, Mass, and allow, and to allow a reasonable opportunity for the license holder and/or its representatives to provide the required documentation. Please be advised that the Board will not approve the foregoing amendment application unless the license holder and/or its representatives has provided the following documents. One, monetary transmittal form. Two, Department of Revenue Certificate of Good Standing. Three, Department of Unemployment Assistant Certificate of Compliance. Four, Change of Officers/Directors Application. Five, Financial Statement. Six, Notarized Quarry Authorization for the new LLC member. Seven, Business Structured Documents. Eight, Business Certificate, if a sole proprietorship. Nine, Partnership Agreement, if a partnership. Ten, Articles of Organization from the Secretary of the Commonwealth, if a corporation or LLC. Twelve, Vote of the Entity Board. Thirteen, Purchase and Sale Agreement. And fourteen, Supporting Financial Records. Please note that you may be requested to submit additional supporting documentation if necessary. The Board of Selectmen Public Hearing Notices are printed in the Newbury Port Daily News and may also be downloaded from the following site, www.townofnewbury.org.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ellen, has everything been received?
Everything's been received.
That was represented in the legal ad? Okay.
And I believe Rusty Can is here.
Okay, it's, okay, hang on one second, we're open. I'm just going to set some parameters for public hearing, nothing out of the ordinary. Everyone, just please be respectful to one another, I'll give everyone a chance to speak. It might take a minute for me to recognize you as we're flowing through the meeting, but everyone will get a chance to speak if you'd like to. So, would you like to say anything?
Sure. Long story short, just to give a little background and reason on.
Before you start, could you just say who you are?
Sorry, my name's Patrick Shea.
Where do you live?
I live in Ipswich.
Okay.
I own, I'm the owner for CK Pearl in Essex, we're just about to celebrate six years. James Sullivan, primary owner of Rusty Can, was my chef, went on to go open up a place. He instilled some barbecue at our restaurant, and it thrived, and he was like, I'm going to go take a run at it. I said, great, I helped him with the administrative part of it, Rusty Can's about to turn three years old, in a really wonderful way, and half jokingly, I remember like after three months, he's like, I didn't, he was kidding, but he's like, I didn't really want to be this busy. The restaurant has done very well, and going into year three, he just would love an extra hand in the world of administrative and bills, et cetera, so such as hired hands for us to make that legitimate. I am here to go through the motions of trying to be added to the license so that it's all correct.
Right, and so it's basically a change of ownership interest. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Any discussion by the Board? Thoughts, questions, comments?
I'm just really pleased to have such a great restaurant in town, so.
It's done really well.
Yeah, it's good to see the place succeed.
Thank you very much, I know, you know, I haven't done a ton of the legwork, I just help him with Ts and Is when he asks me, but I know he's there at 2 AM, and he leaves at about 4, and he drives down from Maine every day to get that thing going, and make sure that there's good meat every day, so.
I know some, I know sometimes when you're that busy, it's good to have a solid person dotting the Ts, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, so, that's good.
Makes me want to reevaluate how I do it at the Pearl.
Right, right, so, okay. I move to approve the Rusty Can LLC, 2019, application for a change of ownership interest amendment to liquor license number 00001-RS-0794.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the business.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, so we have another public hearing scheduled for 7:30, so we'll jump back into business licenses.
Remember to start with Ralph Johnson.
Hank Moore.
You skipped Ralph on the previous page.
Did I?
Okay, so the very last one.
Mine has Ralph, and yours doesn't?
I'm off, mine's been, I've.
Oh, yours has been altered from mine, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Hank Moore, Treasurer, DBA Old Newbury Golf Club Incorporated, 319 Newbury Port Turnpike. Ralph Johnson, Jr., Pert Lowell Company, Lanes End, Auto and Marine. Greg Pugh, Plum Island Beach Comer Restaurant Incorporated, 23 Plum Island Boulevard. Angelo Gianopolis Pizza Factory Incorporated, DBA Plum Island Provisions, 29 Plum Island Boulevard. Elizabeth and Michael Houlihan, Roots to Wings, 76 Newbury Port Turnpike, General Business, Health and Wellness. Linda Gamash, Sadie's for Hair, 6J Fruit Street, General Business and Beauty Shop. John B. Siemens, DBA Sculptured by Beverly Siemens, 2 Newman Road, General Business. Lisa Porter, Sea Coast Horse and Pet Sitting, 48 Old Rowley Road, General Business, Dog Boarding, Dog Daycare and Pet Sitting. Brandon Kelly, DBA Store Yourself, Self Storage, 12 Kent Way, General Business, Self Storage. Elizabeth Moulton Cowie, and Martha Moulton, Surf Land Bait and Tackle LLC, 30 Plum Island Boulevard, General Business, Bait, Tackle, and Sporting Goods. Jane Valpon, Treasurer and Clerk, Valpon Towing Service, 86 rear Newbury Port Turnpike, General Business and Towing Service. Stephen J. Cavill, DBA SK Tree Service, 71 Main Street, General Business and Tree Service. Andrew Haley, DBA Parker River Marine Services, LLC, 7 Newbury Neck Road, General Business, Auto and Marine. Abigail Klarowski, DBA North Shore Acupuncture and Wellness, 65 Newbury Port Turnpike, General Business and Acupuncture and Wellness. Kendall Bowie, DBA Mad Martha's Island Cafe, 51 Northern Boulevard. Georgie Caloris, Georgie Porgy's Ice Cream Factory, LLC, DBA, The Beachfront, 2 Northern Boulevard, Common Victular. I like the name, George. Jasmine Luann, Paul Rooney, Brad DeLibro, Kim Sue DeLibro, DBA Bob Lobster, LLC, 49 Plum Island Turnpike, Common Victular. Narian Patel, DBA BGS Variety, 6D Fruit Street, Common Vic. Felice Bonford, DBA Walk My Paws, 90 Newbury Port Turnpike, General Business and Dog Play Care and Training. And that wraps it up.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on any of the licenses? Save rattled off? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven more minutes.
Has Tracy got a report? How long is it?
You have an administrator's report?
Yep.
Seven minutes of it?
Sure. I'll make it brief. We have completed our Schedule A, and it was approved by the Department of Revenue, along with our tax rates. We have a new tax rate set at $10.99. As far as budget process goes, we're just wrapping up last year, and now here we are starting the process all over again. In December, we had, all the department managers had a training session in the ClearGov software, so we're giving that a try. We've started to enter some of the data in hopes of using this tool as, as part of the process annually, and providing, you know, all of the information online, so people can get answers to many of the questions right there on the, on the page, on the front page. Do you mean process, do you mean budgeting process? Oh, very good. But we've encountered a few hiccups, and, and I guess that goes along with any new software, so it hasn't been quite as, as seamless as we had hoped. My guess is, next year, it'll get a little bit easier, all of the information will be pre-populated, there should be a lot less paper going back and forth, so, that, you know, those are some of the goals, but we've started, anyway, everyone's giving it a try. We did receive a check today in the mail for $27,027.75 from National Grid as part of our energy initiative rebates, so the first check has arrived. We're not completely done with the conversion, there's still a few poles that need some intervention by the grid, whether it's moving them, tree work, whatever, there's a few left, so they're, they're in their queue, we just have to wait for them to come and do the work. Chapter 90 has notified us that Newbury is going to be receiving an additional $26,989 for roadwork next spring. I'm sure we'll find a way to spend it. And the, in terms of the building commissioner resignation, Sam left us, as we all know, the end of December, which we were all very sad to see him go, but I'm sure he'll be very happy, he's our neighbor to the west, in west Newbury, I spent many very, very happy years there, and I'm sure he will as well. We have reclassified the position, so we're going back to the original model of the full-time building commissioner. Had a few interviews, they're underway, we've got quite a few more scheduled through the end of this week. The goal is to get someone, someone on board sometime mid to late February. We do have an interim inspector, Robert Sinner-Baldy, who is the full-time building commissioner in the town of Merrimack. He was functioning as our alternate here in Newbury, so he's taken over, he's available for anyone for appointments in the office on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9 to 12, or by appointment. I checked in with Jennifer this morning, the admin assistant in the office, and everything is current, up to date, so we haven't hit any hiccups as of yet.
If you can find someone within that reasonable timeframe, Tracy, that's good, because it's not that easy.
Okay, where, yeah.
Someone good, it's not that easy.
We're moving full speed ahead, so that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a, we, I'll get into a little bit of correspondence, we had a letter of December 9th, 2019, from National Grid regarding their yearly operational plan and five-year vegetation management plan, basically, notice and that they continue to keep the brush cleared from the lines in their right-of-ways. We had a letter from Mass DOT regarding District 4, regarding the installation of an intelligent transportation system within the community, which, basically, anyone can correct me if they disagree, it boils down to cameras on the highway. They notified us of that. We had a 11/27/2019 letter from the Department of Environmental Protection regarding the draft waterways license, waterways license application by the trustees of reservations for their salt marsh restoration project at Old Town Hill Reservation. We got a letter, I'm going to save these last couple here, I'm going to save these last couple, because we might end up in a little bit of conversation with them. All right, seeing that it's 7:30.
I can read.
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice of a public hearing being held on January 14th, 2020, at 7:30 PM at Newbury Municipal Offices, Bob Kent Way, Byfield, Mass, in the second floor hearing room, for the purpose of holding a public hearing to review the application for a change of stock interest amendment to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12, all alcohol license of Plum Island Grill Incorporated, DBA Plum Island Grill, located at 2 Plum Island Boulevard, Newbury, Mass, and to allow a reasonable opportunity for the license holder and/or its representatives to provide the required documentation. Please be advised that the Board will not approve the foregoing amendment application unless the license holder and/or its representatives has provided the following documents. One, monetary transmittal form. Two, Department of Revenue Certificate of Good Standing. Three, Department of Unemployment Assistant Certificate of Compliance. Four, Change of Officers/Directors Application. Five, Financial Statement. Six, Notarized Quarry Authorization for the proposed manager of record. Seven, Business Structured Documents. Eight, Business Certificate, if a sole proprietorship.
Nine, Partnership Agreement of a Partnership. Ten, Articles of Organization from the Secretary of the Climate Wealth, if a corporation or LLC. Twelve, Vote of the Entity Board. Thirteen, Purchase and Sale Agreement. And fourteen, Supporting Financial Records. Please note that you may be requested to submit additional supporting documentation if necessary. Board of Selectmen Public Hearing notices are printed in Newbury Port Daily News and may also be downloaded from the following site,
Thank you.
Motion open, public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I set the parameters for public hearing earlier, they're, they're similar. I think most of the faces I see have been here for a couple, so we all know the routine. Is there anyone here from Plum Island Grill who would like to speak? Okay, seeing nobody. Alan, has everything been received as outlined in the legal ad?
It has.
Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none? Just a, uh, yeah, I guess this is gonna be easy.
Wanting to approve the license or the change? Gotta read it actually.
Yeah, you had to read it.
That's the Rusty Can one?
Yeah.
Right underneath.
The bottom.
Oh, that one. I moved to approve the Plum Island Grill in two thousand and nineteen, application for a change of stock interest, amendment to liquor license zero 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 one six dash R S dash zero seven nine four.
Second.
Second.
All those, any discussion?
The electrical thing was, wait, wait?
No.
No, okay.
Being worked on, this has nothing to do with that.
Okay, okay, wasn't showing.
This is like a license stuff. Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that was a record. Okay. So I'll go back to correspondence. We have a letter of December twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, from Chaz Rudick, Chair of the Board of Directors, Newbury Council on Aging. Dear Board of Selectmen, in the spring of twenty nineteen, the Council on Aging Board of Directors attempted to expand on the programs offered to our seniors. We faced a major obstacle. In order to hold the events, we had to seek alternative space to conduct the programs. Additionally, other events for our seniors over the years have been held in neighboring towns, as the current space does not allow for the required occupancy. Therefore, we are writing you today to make you aware of the need of a larger, more accommodating site for our senior center, for your consideration and future planning, and ask for your support. Our initial findings include, the size of our entire center is sixteen hundred and twenty-one square feet. According to the twenty-ten U.S. Census, Newbury has one thousand seniors. New census, the new census is performed in twenty-twenty. This makes our center one point six feet per senior. The recommended square feet is five to six feet per senior. This severely limits any activities, classes, events, or meetings to be held. The layout of the center offers little or no privacy for confidential conversations. Accessibility to the center on multiple levels is difficult at best. In the coming year, the Council on Aging Board of Directors will vote to create a special committee on center space to investigate and compile a detailed report of the current and future needs of the community. This report, once approved, will be respectfully submitted for review by the Newbury Board of Selectmen. We totally appreciate the fact that the town has just approved the much-needed police station and that the town is continuing to discuss accommodations for town offices. Therefore, we apologize if our request compounds this situation. However, we feel it's prudent to bring our request to you so it can also be considered for the future of community planning. We believe upon closer inspection, you will agree that our seniors and community would benefit greatly from an expanded site. We offer to meet with you to respond to any initial questions you may have as we continue to collect information to support our presentation to you. Respectfully submitted on behalf of the Newbury Council on Aging Board of Directors, Chaz Rudick, Chair, Board of Directors, Newbury Council on Aging.
I think it's a good thing that the Council on Aging Board of Directors is putting together a committee and beginning to explore and make known their needs, because it takes a while in this town to be able to lay the groundwork, to be able to move something like all the church.
Yeah.
Well, I don't see why you say that.
Takes time.
Walking the path.
All right, uh, we also have a letter of twelve twelve, twenty nineteen, from Mass Housing regarding Byfield Estates Project Eligibility Site Approval from Mass Housing. So this is a, a very lengthy letter. But basically, it looks like Mass Housing approves of the site, much to the disagreement of some people in our community. And I want to go over some of the concerns that town officials expressed after viewing the site, talking to Mass Housing, and participating in the site walk. The municipality is concerned about the proposed road length without an alternative means of access or egress. The fire department stressed that the project must be designed so as to ensure the maximum level of emergency access and fire protection. They outlined a variety of recommendations for the project, including fire lanes, sufficient roadway widths to accommodate public safety vehicles, and minimum setbacks of twenty feet between structures. The municipality is also concerned that the additional twenty-four homes proposed for this development would significantly impact the water pressure of fire hydrants and the capacity of the existing water system may be insufficient to accommodate twenty-four additional homes in that area. The municipality is concerned about the potential environmental impacts on natural resources at the site, including wetlands, buffer, wetland buffer zones, and an identified vernal pool. In addition, the municipality is concerned that the proposed homes will be in close proximity to the adjacent parcel, Mountain Burns Wildlife Management Area, producing an impact on the wildlife and may pose a public safety risk for future residents related to permitted hunting in the wildlife area. And the municipality also expressed concern about the additional traffic that may be generated by the proposed project and associated safety impacts on area roadways and intersections. Pedestrian safety was also identified as a concern in light of the lack of sidewalks in this area. In addition to comments from the town officials, Mass Housing received a letter from an Newbury resident expressing opposition to the project. In summary, it's the opinion of this resident that the proposed development will lead to increased traffic and pedestrian safety issues. In addition, they request that the sidewalks, lighting, and added signage be considered on adjacent Pearson Drive. And Mass Housing determined that the project is generally eligible under the requirements of the program, subject to a final review of eligibility and to final approval. I don't know, it basically says, "Development of the site must comply with all state and federal environmental laws, regulations, standards applicable to existing conditions, and to proposed use related to flood plain management, wetland protection, river and wildlife habitats, conservation areas, storm water, storm water management, wastewater collection treatment, hazardous waste safety, and public water supply. The applicant should be prepared to provide such evidence of compliance." Uh, Mass Housing also stated, "The applicant should continue to engage with municipal officials in good-fake discussion regarding design review matters and other site-related concerns, including but not limited to issues regarding roadway design, public safety considerations raised by local boards and officials. The applicant must comply with Title V regulations regarding the design and construction of shared septic system. The applicant should provide evidence of such compliance prior to the issuance of a building permit for the project. The applicant should be prepared to provide a detailed traffic study assessing potential impacts of the project on area roadways. The traffic study or other professional site design process should address proposed onsite circulation and parking to ensure compliance with public safety standards and good design practice relative to drive aisle widths, turning radii, and site distances. The applicant should be prepared to address concerns about provisions for safe pedestrian access and pedestrian vehicular separation within the site, sufficiency of resident and guest parking, and plans for snow storage, taking into consideration that there is one means of access and egress to the site." And as far as Mass Housing is concerned, they have also reviewed the application for compliance with the requirements of seven sixty CMR fifty-six dash oh four relative to application requirements, and has determined that the material provided by the applicant is significant to show compliance. And basically, to sum it up, and if you've, if the other board members want to add anything. I think it seems that Mass Housing has green-lighted the forty-B at the end of Pearson Drive, although there are still hurdles for the developer to clear on the town level.
I think I've learned, Mass Housing has taught me a little bit of legalese. I wonder how far I can get away with it, using it, like genuinely, generally eligible, generally appropriate. That's kind of cool.
Yeah, must be nice, right?
Yeah.
You guys gonna let me use that a lot? But anyway, that's how they state this.
Yeah. I mean, my, my reading from the letter, and it was true the last time too, is the town raises a lot of very valid objections, and we don't choose to listen to any of them, go ahead.
Correct. I, I attended the site walk, and I was, I was disappointed, because I was familiar with the neighborhood, for one, growing up here. Two, paying attention during the site walk, and I felt like I was paying attention and looking a little hotter than some of the folks from Mass Housing, and I, I found that disappointing. Unfortunately, we're below our quota for affordable housing in this town, and there isn't a lot we can do to push back at these fortyBs. We can weigh in as officials with our concerns, but basically, it comes down to Mass Housing almost rolling over you. And it's, it's frustrating, because I don't know, I, I don't feel that, uh, the end of Pearson Drive is a great place for twenty-four more homes.
I mean-
It puts a strain on the neighborhood, the infrastructure. We need affordable housing units, but-
Not there.
I mean, the planning board is kind of looking forward to maybe establishing some parameters of how to proceed with some affordable housing. The complication for us right now is, a house lot in Newbury is very, very expensive, if it's a nice house lot. Good drainage in the right spot and everything else, and usually, those are snapped up by larger homes or whatever. So you're gonna see forty-B come into areas that is not really great property.
Well, the-
You know, property that's a little hard to permit, maybe, and, you know, you get a little bit of a more straight shot when you come in with a forty-B component, as long as you meet what those bylaws.
Worked hard at a production, housing production plan, and they identified certain locations in town that, you know, might be acceptable to forty-B. This was not one of them.
Well, I think around only like two and a half percent.
Three and a half.
Are we up to three and a half? So it's just, it's, you know, we don't come from a great strength.
One thing I did learn, talking to Mr. Bisby at the site visit, is, and I might be incorrect about this, because it was just a verbal conversation, so please don't hold me to it, but I was asking him, like, what steps can we take as a community to make forty-B a little more controllable, so we can steer it into appropriate areas? And he told me, it seems like Massachusetts considers a unit, a unit. One thing Newbury could consider, and I don't know if it was, would really be appropriate for us to tackle it on our own, or if it would come from a community, or if it's gonna come along on its own, but it's, it's, like, I know probably the thought of an forty-B apartment building in town might not be appealing to some people.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Where the state considers a unit, a unit, the fastest way for us to reach our threshold would be with an apartment building. Is that how you understand it, Les?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yeah.
No. Route one would be a perfect place for it.
So, but until we reach our threshold, there isn't a lot we can do besides recommend some of the sites. Forty-B really emboldens and empowers these developers to, to clear a lot of the hurdles and regulations that ordinary developers and citizens wouldn't have to, and it's, um, it's frustrating.
Well, like I said, it really opens up land that's kind of marginal.
Yeah, right. Places I would be challenging for a traditional developer, I agree.
Um, I was gonna talk about this in meeting updates, but I'll talk about it now. So I've been meeting with the Merrimack Valley Regional Planning Authority and the head of the planning board, and Martha. So we had a, a meeting for a couple hours yesterday, looking at some of the options, looking at whether or not a, a regional housing authority would, would help us get where we need to be, and some of the other options of partnership and things like that. So, you know, we are chipping away at it. We'd started meeting before the holidays, and they had a change of leadership over there, and so things got slowed down, but it, it is being worked on. Hopefully, we can find some things that will actually move it in the right direction, so we don't get caught off guard again.
And I know Tom, I know Tom Plannamatha-Taylor has also been working on hard, working hard to find ways to basically achieve our required tier of affordable housing in a tasteful way, and make future fortyBs after that more controllable.
Yeah, and one of the things that is important to know is that for it to be affordable housing, it has to be deed restricted. It can't just be cheap. It has to be restricted and set at a certain level and maintain that either ad infinitum. One of the other projects, we're hoping to engage Habitat with Humanity and the school system to have them work on, uh, creating affordable housing in one of the three towns each summer. So it's a summer project combining the students and the resources from Habitat from Humanity.
And also, one thing I want to note about fortyBs in town that's important for people to realize, an affordable unit in Newbury, based on the value of homes in Newbury, is, would run about three hundred thousand dollars, last I heard. That figure might have even gone up since.
Three and four.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be, I know some people think of forty-B, and they get images of riffraff and wrongdoers and things, and that's not necessarily always the case. I've known people that have, that have taken advantage of fortyBs, deservingly, in other communities, and they were hard-working people. And also, these affordable units in Newbury, they'd be in the price range of people that, from like, I call the pickup truck crowd, which I consider myself part of the pickup truck crowd, you know, guys that swing a hammer, landscapers, independent contractors and things, like your working-class, blue-collar people, you know, they're units they could afford, but they'll still have a fairly hefty price tag being in our community, given the property values.
Right, I think the only thing that makes me upset about this one is the location. It's not that it's forty-B, it's just that it's-
Well, it's the amount of houses, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on a, for all the reasons we said.
I mean, so North of Boston now is getting up over three hundred thousand dollars? Holy mackerel.
They were proposing for, um, this location were under three hundred thousand dollars. And the, uh, those were going to be somewhere in the high sixes to the low seventies.
The rest, yeah, yeah.
All the units would be identical to one another, so even the affordable houses-
They said in, they said in the kitchens, they were gonna like use some miker, is that a grant? Now, that's changed?
Nope, they're, they're all gonna be identical to one another. That was part of the, the deal, so if the higher-priced units get granite, hardwood, and tile, so do the affordable houses.
Perfect.
It's a good deal.
It's a really great deal.
Yeah.
So what they want to do with these affordable houses is, say like you have, your, your children have graduated from college, and they're starting a career as a firefighter or a teacher, and they haven't reached that high plateau as far as their income is concerned, and you want to still keep them in town. This way, they can afford to stay in town and, and still stay in the community they grew up in.
Or it might turn over the other way, because people leave their big houses, and their income strengths, right, everyone? You might be able to afford, be moving into an affordable house if you can. I wonder how that goes, if we've got an age restriction, because we're so old, they don't want us in an affordable house?
I don't know.
We won't be there long enough?
Yeah. Martha couldn't attend the meeting, but she wanted you to have that information.
Right, and I, Chris, I have it right here. Yeah, Martha wanted to make a note, she couldn't be here tonight. She just wanted to make sure it was clear that no comprehensive permit application has been received yet. It still has to go before the ZBA. All right.
A Mass MMA Annual Business Meeting.
Yeah, we have the MMA Annual Business Meeting coming up. I know Selectwoman Greco and Selectman Doyle are planning on attending. Let's see, uh, we got the, we got the waterways, yeah, we did them. So, uh, any meeting updates?
We went to the Triton.
Yeah, DCC.
Yeah. The, um, there's gonna be another meeting coming up at the end of the month, but they're working towards, Desi's approved language for the regional agreement, so that it can go before town meeting.
So essentially, we approved the amendment to the regional agreement. It got sent to the state lawyers to look at it and-
Comment.
Comment on it. And so hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll have those comments from them, so we can re-review it and say that everything is still fine. It's mostly been, um, topographical changes, you know, changing from regional school district to just the district and things like that. But I figure we want to have it on the agenda at our next meeting, so that everyone in this board has looked at it before-
Right, and it kind of has to be, because we're a regional school district, and other ti-, the other three towns have a different timeline for their time, town meeting, so the school is very tight with the timeline, that everybody has to approve it, so it can get- very tight with the timeline, that everybody has to approve it, so it can get to town meeting on time.
I mean, if it looks like it, and I'm sure it hasn't, that the changes are at all substantive, send it over to town council.
We already have.
Yeah, we did.
We have, that's already been to town council once, approved.
I mean, the finished copy, make sure it's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll all go through that before.
I'll be at the next meeting, anyway.
Revote at town meeting.
Yeah, that was the big discussion at the DCC meeting. I just think that was the only thing we really discussed.
Yeah. Any other meeting updates?
Pete, Martha, Doug, and I walked the driving range. They're not as far along with stabilization as we would like, but he is working on keeping things, getting things stabilized. He's taken some steps that we don't think are the right steps, so we're in discussion with trying to get him back on track.
What did he do?
Well, in putting in some of the drainage, he went up into the short-gain area where he was not supposed to work, cut through that section. He has not stabilized it yet. There's other areas that, like up on the landing area, where he's done no stabilization at all, and that's a major concern, because it's the biggest source of water coming off the site and carrying silt into the wetlands, and then across Scotland Road into the marsh, or into the resource area. So there's just things that he's not doing. He's removed catch basins at the bottom of the driveway, so if there's a significant rain, the, the future driveway has become just a sluice way. So we, there were a lot of concerns. We're gonna be compiling a letter to him, giving him some dates, that he must have these areas stabilized.
Is he still being fined daily?
He's not currently being fined daily. Should he not comply with the stabilization order, we'll probably recommence finding him again.
Okay.
Well, that would be up to, not us, but up to the building inspector, right?
Building inspector, or Doug, or...
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. If he's not in compliance, he will be fined.
And you're using the building, the planning board's engineer tool?
Yeah, Joe.
He's good, yep.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna start to lock up here. If it's gonna lock up at all this winter, it's gonna start with a cold soon.
Yeah, I mean...
Either that, or it's gonna be wide open all winter.
At least if it freezes, the dark can't slide away.
Yeah.
About it.
The ground is frozen. Let go with some weather, though.
Okay, any other meeting updates? So, any citizens' concerns tonight?
Chairman, I don't have a citizen concern, but regarding the letter from the Council on Aging, Joyce and Curious, myself, and Sandy Small have been with the committee to prepare a report on the senior center needs, and we have another thought on that. We have been looking at other senior citizens, and we know you're in the process of, of looking at your needs for a town hall. And one of the places that we went to, and we have another meeting with them, is the Merrimack Senior Citizen Center, and we were impressed with that and how they're run, and they actually are in an old building that they made considerable changes to, to meet the needs of their space. And so we, we just wanted to let you know that when you're searching for ideas and looking at other options, we don't necessarily need new space, but that'll all be in a report that we're going to present to you. We're only a day old.
Yeah, right. And I imagine your, your first steps are gonna be, what, how big do you think your program is, and how many people, and how many square feet, and you go from there?
Exactly.
Similar to what we've gone through.
Right.
So, okay, sounds good. Thank you, Evelyn.
Okay.
Okay, any other citizens' concerns tonight? Okay, seeing none?
Second. Warrants.
Oh, sorry, motion to sign warrants?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any meeting minutes tonight to approve?
No.
Okay, motion to adjourn again?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.